Good evening, welcome to the September 23rd, 2019 City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. And we're going to have the Seal Beach Police Department honor guard.
We have the one.
All right, coming up. Not today? Okay.
(laughing).
Uh, city clerk, will you please take role?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Protemstis Starsik.
Here.
Councilmember Verapapa.
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavat.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, move on to the approval of the agenda. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public.
We do the pledge?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protemstis Starsik, please leave us in the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the US with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, by motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item? City clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, three communications were received regarding various agenda items that were distributed to council and has been made available to the public.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kerry's. Move on to presentations. The Interval House 40th Anniversary Recognition. Interval House opened its doors to the city of Seal Beach in 1979 and has worked passionately to develop innovative programs that have been recognized with over 500 of our nation's most prestigious awards, including five presidential awards, five governor's awards, citing Interval House as a model domestic violence program to the nation. Today, Interval House has strengthened its mission and purpose by offering specialized programs and services in over 70 different languages for both youth and adult victims. On behalf of the city of Seal Beach and the City Council, congratulations on your 40th anniversary as the most highly recognized and innovative domestic violence program in the country. I'd like to call President Donna Melody and Vice President Harleen Goodrich to the podium to present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Moore and honorable council members for this recognition. Donna and I have been longtime members of the Board of Directors of Interval House and we're very proud of the 40 years that we have been in business. It all started in Seal Beach in 1979 and the first shelter was actually the home of Norma Gibbs who lived on the hill. And we had one, one person that sought refuge at the beginning and we had the office in the garage next to the washing machine and the dryer. And Norma Gibbs just passed away this, this month. She's a former mayor of Seal Beach and she took such pride in, in Interval House and watched how it grew by leaps and bounds. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it is, it has been very helpful to all of the people, thousands of women and children who have passed through our doors and found new life. It's, it was, it's a wonderful project. Today, we are, as you said, recognized across the country for the program that we offer to them and none of this would have been, would have happened without the support of Seal Beach. All those years ago, and you've always been our, you know, our fan and, and over the years, the 40 years, and so we are very grateful to accept this and thank you very much for your support and for recognizing our life-saving efforts.
Thanks. And I'd like to call upon Field Representative Ryan Billings from Assemblyman Tyler Deep's office to present a certificate of recognition to Interval House in honor of their 40th anniversary.
Members of the City Council and folks from Interval House, it's my pleasure to be here on behalf of State Assemblyman Tyler Deep this evening to present this Assembly Certificate of Recognition to you in honor of your 40th anniversary and to thank you very much for the essential services you provide to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. (applause).
This proclamation from Seal Beach.
Oh, very nice. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll call upon Public Works Director Steve Marner to introduce John Hunter to talk about the San Gabriel River update.
Mayor, if I could, just before Steve begins, also wanted to recognize, as you know, Ryan Billings is here on behalf of Assemblyman Deep's office and we also have representation from Senator Tom Umberg's office, who both offices have been highly engaged in the San Gabriel River cleanup effort along with council and staff. So, wanted to recognize them and thank them for their participation in the meeting tonight. Steve?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, honorable mayor members of the council. I'd like to introduce John Hunter with John Hunter and Associates. Their fir-, his firm, he's the president and the owner. His firm specializes in MPDS, stormwater management, in industrial waste management, in water conservation and recycling, and has been assisting over 40 cities in LA and Orange Counties. And he's been working for us for about, since 2006. He's also serving as the lower Los Angeles River Consultant Chair for the Watershed Group, Lower San Gabriel River Watershed Group and Palos Verdes Peninsula Watershed Group. And John, please.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to be back here again to give you a further update on trash controls on the San Gabriel River. So, the first slide is basically, shows the geographical extent of the watershed. The yellow is the cities and areas that are in Los Angeles County. The orange are areas that are in Orange County. All of these drain to the San Gabriel River and they're down towards the bottom outlined in red, you can see Seal Beach. So, all that drainage discharges through the San Gabriel River and deposits whatever comes out of that into the ocean or onto your, your beaches, as I'm sure you're familiar with. You can see it's a 58-mile water long river. It's long by California standards, a huge watershed area, nearly 700 square miles, and there's 43 upstream cities that discharge to it. So, quite a number of players on, on this. Just as background on this, both Los Angeles cities and Orange County cities are subject to the trash, the statewide trash amendment that was passed by the, the State Water Resources Control Board up in Sacramento a few years back. And basically what that does is a, we know that there are certain catch basins in the, in cities that have more likelihood of generating more trash. So, what they've said is that by 2030, you as cities, and that applies to all these cities, must install full capture systems for capturing trash in your areas, in five high priority areas, high-density residential, industrial areas, commercial areas, mixed urban and public transportation stations. Now, that's the rule that was passed and I've got just the first page of the resolution adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board there. But basically, at that point, it's just a, a notice from the, the state board. It is not enforceable at that moment. In order to make that enforceable, it has to be either adopted into the city's MS4 stormwater permit, or you get notification from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And here's kind of where LA cities and Orange County cities diverge. The, let's see, I, I'll back up on this. The LA County cities have been ordered by their local regional board to start. Orange County cities have not. What the reasons are, you know, is purely a matter of speculation, but the Orange County permit has been pending for quite some time now and the speculation is that they've, the Orange County Board is just waiting for that permit to get issued so they don't have to do double duty. Nonetheless, the, this program has to be complete by 2030. All cities are basically just saying, well, that means about 10% per year. That's all cities, LA County and, and Orange County. Now, what does that mean? We're all familiar with the catch basins. You see that on the left up there. That's the opening in the curbs that formerly went out to the ocean and the river's untreated. Now, in those five high priority areas, you're going to have to install a full capture device, which you see, a typical one on the right-hand side. It's a 5-millimeter screen made out of stainless steel, so it will capture anything larger than 5 millimeters, which is about a quarter of an inch. And in effect, they actually capture a lot finer materials because when the leaves and the other litter get captured, the filter actually works better. And there is an emergency overflow. If you look at that picture there on the, on the right, you'll say, well, wait a minute, what's that big gap there for? That's in case it gets plugged because flooding is a worse concern than one catch basin's worth of trash and litter. So, they've tried to build a safety into it. But nonetheless, stainless steel baskets, quarter-inch diameter are going into all five of those land uses. You'll probably see as you drive around any city that there are faceplates or curb screens that you see. Those are no longer considered full capture. So, those are fine, they'll catch maybe 85% of the trash, but they won't get 100%. So, that's why these are being retrofitted with the, the screens on their right. Other trash devices, you have trash booms, you've got some installed on the Los Angeles River and in the Bolsochica Wetlands. Trash booms are nice, but I have to relay a story of the LA River. The first booms that went out were, were beautiful nets and they were really cleverly designed that as they filled up with trash, the ropes holding the nets would tighten and, and capture all of the trash. What would happen in the incredible volume of water that comes down there, the nets would get ripped off their moorings and I have been told that there, somewhere in the San Pedro Channel, there's a couple of nets full of trash that are sitting at the bottom of the ocean right now. So, what they've done is, is they've installed new systems that basically create eddies in the LA River during storms. And the trash swirls and gets directed to a bend in the river where it can be collected. So, I, we hear all the time about booms, they're not always 100% effective just because of the volume of, of water that comes out of the, of the mountains. You have trash skimmers and trash wheels like were recently installed in Newport Bay. Those are great, but they will not work in moving water. So, they'll suffer the same fate as the early trash nets. But they are, they are making progress in collecting those. So, let's talk about LA County now. The LA Regional Water Quality Control Board, back in 2017, sent a letter out to the cities and said, you know that trash amendment that the state adopted? Start now. And so, they're under requirements basically to do 10% per year so that they have all of these inserts installed easily by 2030. Cities were originally aiming to install these by that deadline, but what happened in LA County is the voters passed Measure W, now known as the Safe Clean Water Program. Because the problem is, how do you fund something like this? And LA County cities now have funding, so we suspect these units will be going in, into, into the catch basins at a much, much faster rate. Some cities, and I'm going to give a shout out to the city of Bellflower, they've already installed 100% of these. So, they're, the cities are moving forward at, at varying rates. In Orange County, there's no funding source readily available for this. So, there's an ad hoc group that has come together, basically, how do we address this problem? And so, they're doing databases, they're trying to keep track of how cities are doing, they're working with contractors to come up with a, a feasible method of doing this, of installing these. But the funding is limited in, in Orange County at this point. Orange, Orange County Transportation Authority has had a grant since 2011, 2012. Many cities are taking advantage of this. So, it's not that cities are just, we don't have the money, we're not doing anything. Funds are available through this grant. So, many cities, in fact, I would say most cities are already on their way towards installing these. They may not be on target, but they are moving towards, towards a target. Seal Beach has installed 55 of these full capture systems and has a grant pending for an additional 48. So, Seal Beach is, is, is ahead of the curve on, on installing these. Potential grant opportunities are out there. So, we could work with other Orange County cities to obtain a grant on a regional basis and maybe accelerate these. The Palos Verdes Peninsula that I work, work with, they have a grant, they received a grant to install inserts in all of their catch basins. So, they're moving forward. And this might be an opportunity for Orange County cities to, to move, move forward with that. So, I'll conclude my, my talk with a few takeaways. Upstream Los Angeles cities are going to be on track to install all the inserts in their high priority catch basins well before the mandated deadline. Seal Beach is on, on, on track to, to meet the deadline. Their installation of the trash capture devices here are underway. Homeless encampments, as we start to get less and less trash in the, in the, in the river from cities, what we're finding out is that the trash from the homeless encampments become more and more noticeable. So, that's one thing we have to keep cognizant of. And that's something that probably is outside the scope of, of a stormwater control at the moment, but every city is, is facing that. So, that concludes my brief update and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Yes, thank you for that presentation, John. It hopefully clears the air a bit and people have a, a better understanding of exactly what we're up against. What, what do we think we can do with regard to the larger trash, which is, you know, appears to be coming from the homeless encampments, the, the shopping carts and tires and the big stuff that the catch basins have nothing to do with, or the illegal dumping, you know, upriver?
That is a tough question. I, I actually asked that question of LA County Flood Control, which maintains almost all of, of the San Gabriel River watershed. And basically, they said, they've got a program, if you see any dumping unusual amounts of trash, let them know, they'll get out, they'll clean it up and they'll take care of it. But quite honestly, their, the, the program that they have addressing that is overwhelmed currently.
And what about the, the pollution that we can't see in, in the water itself? Whether it's metal, heavy metals, or any other pollutants that the catch basins aren't going to be able to deal with?
I wish I would have brought a different map, but you, you saw how, how large LA County's is compared to Orange County. With the passage of that Measure W, there are plans right now for a dozen, that, a dozen projects that will probably be phased in over the next decade. And we're talking projects that are going to be in the 10 to $25 million range each, where they, the, the water will be directed to treatment systems and either recaptured and used for drinking water, or cleaned and put back into the, back into the river. So, I would say in a decade from now, you will see a marked difference from current conditions.
I know that, in fact, I had not known this before, that we have a sea turtle population up near the, the steam plant.
Yes, in fact.
The DWP. Is there any political capital with environmental groups or legislation that we might take advantage of knowing that?
Yeah, well, the, the Lower San Gabriel River Watershed Group has adopted the turtle as their logo. So, I would say there probably is, I would say the environmental groups probably don't need any more motivation to protect the, the sea turtles. And, yeah, so I, I don't think the, the sea turtles will, will factor into it, but a lot of people are aware that the sea turtles are, are there, yes.
And with regard, my last question, with regard to the insertion of devices in the river, I heard you say that devices like the, the big wagon wheel are not necessarily going to work because the water is moving in the San Gabriel River. Is there any other way to deploy something like that? Or now you're dealing with the jurisdictions in terms of where you place a boom or that type of a device and how do you extract the, you know, empty the collected trash out of the river?
Well, here, here's where the art of politics might come into effect. The, the San Gabriel River in this area is, is maintained by Los Angeles County Flood Control. So, we'd have to talk with LA County Flood Control about putting a berm there. I doubt they would have much interest in that at the moment because they would probably adopt a, well, let's, a wait and see how the trash inserts work. There's also the problem that that area is, has the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction and that would add about four years to any, any permit, permit, permitting process. I mean, we, we have right now in the Lower San Gabriel River, we want to take samples of the water. And that consists of putting a half-inch tube down the wall of the river and collecting samples. We've had the application into the Army Corps of Engineers for four years now, just to put that little tube in. And we understand that we will probably have our permit by the end of the year. So, if you want to do something like the trash boom, it certainly is, I, I don't see a reason of why it wouldn't be doable. It worked in the Los Angeles River, but it's, it's, it's going to be a, you know, it, we're just going to have to go through the, the bureaucratic maze that, that is, is out there.
And what about, I don't mean to take all the time, but.
It's okay.
I've been kind of working on this. Prop 1 funds. I know that Sa-, that Newport Beach was able to get a million and a half dollar grant to be able to purchase one of the, you know, the large conveyor belt systems.
Correct. Yeah, and, and that would be an excellent opportunity. There is the round two of Prop 1 coming up pretty soon. They just reviewed the guidelines, they, they're out for comment now, so I would expect within six months to a year, the applications for those might be out.
But, and then if, if it was placed far upriver enough to where the water isn't moving the way it is, you know, within the city of Seal Beach or Los Alamos or that section, it might be a practical.
Anywhere in the river would face the severe water velocity problems. So, if you're going to do that, I would put it down as close to Seal Beach as you could. It would just have to be engineered very well.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
The, the Prop 1 funds, are they administered by the Rivers and Mountains Conservancies? I know that, I'm on that board. And I know that we administrate some of that. But would this be part of that? Would?
Well, that's, that's interesting. Prop 1 funds are actually available from three different agencies. There's the, the RMC, which you referenced. There, some of the funds are available from the State Water Resources Control Board and some are available from the Department of Water Resources. All of those would probably, I think the RMC and the State Water Resources would be applicable to, to this. And I, my recollection is that it's going to be about $200 million that are available statewide. The, the funds that are available through the Department of Water Resources probably would not be applicable to this because you're not capturing and reclaiming water. But, you know, if Seal Beach by itself applies for this, the, the likelihood would not be as high as if all of the Orange County cities applied for it. It would be much, much more attractive to the state if you, if several cities, several agencies would cooperate in a, you know, in, together.
I think there's only 14 cities that are within the shed, watershed of San Gabriel River. It goes through Brea from Brea towards Seal Beach.
Right.
So, that's not a lot of cities to divide up, but, or to put in a coalition. But $200,000 statewide.
Two, 200 million.
200 million?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes.
Check, fix my ear. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering my question.
Yeah, and, and there again, it's, it's a matter of, well, if you only get 10 cities or 11, that's pretty good. So, that might be something worth pursuing.
I have a quick question. What's the deadline of the cities to complete the installation?
Well, it's, it's 2030 and I have to be.
2030 for both counties?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, and we're, we're using, in LA, in LA County, all the cities had to submit a report to the local regional board that says, we're going to do about 10% a year. But the amendment itself basically says, you don't have to do anything until 2030. Now, that's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars probably all at once, so cities are, are moving ahead.
I've seen in, in certain cities, these trash, trash capture devices and a lot of times they're just full of, full of debris, debris and, and trash, basically. Is there provisions to clean it out or it just sits there and, to the next rainstorm? Because it's just, I never really see like people coming in and cleaning it, not that I'm there all day, but what are the provisions for that?
Well, they're going to be, it's going to be, that's going to be developed by each city. And it's basically, how, how much do you want to prevent flooding? Some cities I know, they clean them out monthly. Other cities clean them out, and this is the most common, three times a year during the rainy season and once in September or October at the start of the rainy season. A few cities, I hate to say, once a year or as complaints come in.
Are there fines that they impose if they're not in compliance in 2030 or how does that work?
Oh, yes, yes. This would be enormous fines. Basically, it's violations of the Clean Water Act if you are, if you don't have this installed by 2030.
And the next time that you come visit us, is there a way you can get a list of the cities, of the 43 cities that are in compliance to date and who isn't in compliance, just for, you know, informational purposes?
That information is not readily available. In LA County, we can take a look at their annual reports and see how they're doing, but then we're, we're relying on the accuracy of the, of the individual cities and, and how they reported. But that's, in, in Orange County, that's one of the beauties of the database that that group is, is, is working on. They are actually starting to list the cities that are, you know, the, the status of each city. I think there's only two cities that are participating right now that have listed, but all the.
Mention Bellflower in LA County, right?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. So, they're, they're done. But in, in Orange County, it would be, you know, the, the cities that haven't listed it on the database are saying, oh, you know, that's not a bad idea. But that's, that's where we are right now with the ad hoc committee.
So, is it status quo then for the next 10, 11 years? Is that what we're looking at?
I, I suspect you will see a much, a much more robust installation program because remember when, when the.
Mentioned Bellflower in LA County, right?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So they're, they're, they're done. Uh, but in, in Orange County, it would be, um, you know, the, the cities that haven't listed it on the database are saying, oh, you know, that's not a bad idea. But that's, but, that's where we are right now with the ad hoc committee.
So is it status quo then for the next 10, 11 years? Is that what we're looking at?
Um, I, I suspect you will see a much, a much more robust installation program, because remember when, when the OCTA grant started back in 2011, there was no priority. And cities were basically, hey, you know, we ought to do something about trash. We've got this extra money, let's put in some inserts. Now they have to put in inserts, so they've actually got a purpose to put, to dedicate money, even if they don't, if they didn't previously want to, they have to.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Good. I, I just want to comment, uh, on the city of Seal Beach. I had no idea that we're about halfway through providing those captured basins. I think that was really forward thinking of the staff here, and I'm glad that they did it, even though it's only 50% finished. I mean, you know, we got 10 years to finish the other half. And then when the, when the debris, I could've said something else, comes out of the, the river channel, it won't be from Seal Beach, and we will know that, and no one will say, oh, it's just Seal Beach throwing all its stuff down the drain.
Yeah, that's correct. Probably I should, I'd say, but you, you're not 50% of the way done, but you are.
Close.
You are moving in the right direction.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Our catch basins, the best way, in your opinion, to catch the most trash?
The best way to do it would be to find a, a location downstream, such as an outfall or a pump station, and put in a large treatment system that's more cost effective, easier to maintain. The problem is, those are few and far between. So in reality, the catch basin inserts are the, are the way to go.
I'd like to add to that. We are already looking at a, we've already, Iris and I already started looking at a potential. We have a city with two pump stations, which are ideal for the, what they call a CDS unit. So it's kind of a centrifugal force type device. So the water comes in, it, it spins the trash, it spins this kind of wheel, if you will. Trash goes to the middle, you can pump it out, doesn't affect the stormwater, and it's a much more efficient way to do it. So we can, we're looking at deploying it at both pump stations and applying for a grant to do so. That'll be the next grant we put together for next year. So, so there, we have already kind of looked at that, and there's definitely potential here. Our city is set up in such a way that can do that.
And, and just to make it clear, as Steve said, if you put in the CDS units, you do not have to put any of the inserts in upstream.
And then would it help to, um, work with other cities to reduce the time from 2030 down to 2025, or is that unrealistic?
No, I, I think it's, I think it's realistic. I mean, uh, you know, you, you will, you will run into some cities that say, I have to do it by 2030, and I'm going to do it by 2030. But my, most, most cities will, uh, recognize the problem, and, uh, will move, will try to move forward.
Okay.
But, but we're, we're entering uncharted waters, so we'll see how, how that works.
All right, thank you for the presentation, it was very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council, and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Any comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, council. My name is Robert Aguilar, I'm a resident of District Two in Seal Beach. I'm also, for full disclosure, uh, an appointed, uh, planning commissioner for the city. Uh, is there, who is controlling the slides? Was that you? Can you go back to, uh, Mr. Hunter's fifth slide? With the, that, the, keep forward, the, the road there, thank you. Um, I, I just, I want to thank Mr. Hunter for his report. I just want to point, and he's gone, so hopefully he sees this on TV. Um, I, I've done some extensive research on this as well, specifically researching economical solutions, specifically the rotary, uh, catch on the si- on the right-hand side here. Um, this is actually invented by a gentleman in Boston, and I called him, and we spoke extensively regarding his invention. And I just wanted to make a couple of corrections, this is not any disrespect to Mr. Hunter, but if you notice the wheel on the left-hand side, uh, these specifically are designed to be propelled by a moving river. So he had mentioned that, uh, still wa- it needs still water, it actually needs moving water, because these are fully self-contained. So the, the rotary on the left-hand side operates the wheel, or the, um, I'm sorry, the conveyor that brings the trash in, and it fills a dumpster in the back that's on a floating device and is removable. Newport Beach, at the end of the San Diego River, just installed this, and this is, he had mentioned Newport Bay. Uh, they got a $1.5 million grant from, uh, Prop One. Currently, for the purposes of Seal Beach and cleaning our river, there's $78 million available to fund a project similar to this that would clean up the entire San Gabriel River. It may even fund the facilities that they were mentioning earlier. Um, I personally, as a citizen and somebody who walks on the beach, often thinks that 2030 is unacceptable. We have several tons of trash annually that come just to our beach, from these 14 cities and other 43 that feed into it. And our gracious volunteers spend their time, like they did yesterday, cleaning up all this trash, almost, once a month, that, once a month, they have two, two bins full, at least a ton of trash, once a month, that we, just Seal Beach, is responsible for, but is being contributed by these cities upstream. So I want to call on the city of Seal Beach, if they could, to look into the available Proposition One funding, which is currently, as I understand, 78 million. I've actually already met with Senator Umberg, and he gives the full support, uh, to the city if the city is able to apply for it, because the way Newport Beach did it, city of Newport Beach applied for the grant, was given the grant, and they worked out agreements with the cities up the river, Irvine, Aliso Viejo, to contribute to the maintenance of the machine, and they're going to do that in perpetu- in perpetuity. So I'm calling on the city of Seal Beach to take the initiative, move this faster, because our beach needs to be clean, period. Thank you.
I'd like to talk to, uh, item G on the agenda, which is a $165,000 contract for a consultant to do a citywide assessment of our ADA disability assessments. Um, this is mandated by the feds coming through, I guess, uh, OCTA. There's, uh, it sounds like it's mandatory, um, I'm not opposed to it, but what I'd like to discuss is how it's being funded. And the way it's being funded is that, um, it's being partially funded with $100,000 that was appropriated during the budget for a capital project that involved doing a citywide sidewalk assessment. Uh, this is CIP Project ST 2004, uh, had, actually had two parts. One was to do a citywide assessment of offsets in the sidewalk, uh, these are tripping hazards. And then it also included, uh, money to presumably, uh, do, uh, what we call year one repairs. We've been doing sidewalk repairs, at least for the last 10 years since I've been here. For, for the last seven years, these repairs have been based on a citywide survey that was done in 2012. We had a contractor go out and walk every street and measure offsets, and those that are half inch or more were put on a schedule, a 10-year schedule. And we're right now at, uh, basically the beginning of, of year seven, and, uh, there's still about two dozen projects to be done, uh, based on a 2012 survey. So we've really, we've made a lot of progress. It's been, um, a credit to the city. But it's been seven years, and trees grow, and sidewalks move. And so it's time to do another assessment, and this is what we were told during the CIP workshops that we were going to get. Again, I'm not opposed to the, the ADA project, um, but I think that should be funded separately, and not usurping funds for what really should be considered a sidewalk safety survey. Uh, we have a lot of runners in town, walkers, um, and offsets in this, in the sidewalk are a huge hazard. Uh, people get, fall all the time, my wife's fallen, uh, she's a runner. So what I would propose, and what I'd ask the council, is, uh, to direct staff to do both. We, we can do both. We can do the ADA study that's required, and we can do the concrete, uh, sidewalk safety study as well. Now, the, the ADA study, uh, does include, uh, the ADA ramps on the sidewalks, but the ADA study will not look at offsets from trees all over, uh, all throughout the city. There's plenty of money to do the sidewalk survey. Uh, the money that was proposed was gas tax fund money, $100,000 of gas tax fund money. And the budget shows that, uh, at the end of the year, we'll have over a half a million left over in the gas tax. And so we could appropriate another $100,000 from that $500,000 to do the sidewalk survey that we were expecting to get done. We get, tween the gas tax and the M2, and now the SB1, which is the new, um, gas tax, this year we're getting almost 1.5 million in money from these various, uh, street-related taxes. And presumably we'll get as much, if not more, later. So $100,000 to do our concrete program, our survey and some repairs, uh, we certainly can afford that. So I'm just, my, I'm, I'm just opposed to taking money from, uh, Peter to pay Paul. And basically, that's what we're doing here, when we have plenty of gas tax money, uh, to do both. So I would ask, um, again, I'm not, you're going to approve, uh, item G and approve that contract on your consent calendar, and that's fine. Um, but doing your council comments, you could direct staff to come back, um, for whatever budget amendment they need, to move ahead as we were, thought we were going to go ahead with, with a, a citywide concrete survey and sidewalk repairs. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Don't want to forget this. I want to recognize, um, staff for several improvements, specifically two improvements, um, that, uh, that I've come to appreciate in the last week or so. The first is that, uh, this week, excuse me, last week, the packages, the council packages were posted online Wednesday night. Normally, they're posted online for the public on Thursday night. Um, and I've advocated to get these things posted a day early, if not two days early, uh, for several years now. And this was the first, uh, council packet that was posted a day early, and I understand that's going to be, it wasn't going to be a one-time thing, from what I understand from the city clerk's office. And so I want to give a shout out to the city's clerks, um, the city manager, to the extent that she's, um, responsible for getting everybody to move everything one day earlier. This may not make the front page of the Sun in terms of breaking news, uh, but this is important for those of us that like to read the packets, which can, you know, you guys know, can go from 200 pages to 1,000 pages. You guys get them a day before the public does, and so it does help for us to get them another day earlier. The, the other, um, improvement that I want to mention is that, um, as you all know, I do a lot of public records requests. I would say typically, uh, it takes 10 to 12, 14 days to get responses on those PRAs, even if they're somewhat de minimis. Um, and what's changed is that the last two, if not three, that I've submitted, I've gotten responses the next day, if not, maybe, maybe the same day, but, but cer- but I've gotten two or three the next day. And it's, it's very different, there's been a change, it's a very positive change. Um, and I want to give credit for whoever's responsible, because it's not just the city clerk's office. The city clerk is the coordinator, but staff, the, the actual departments, public works and finance, um, and other departments are the ones that, that have to give her the information and respond, so it's not just hers, her office. So I want to give a shout out to that, and, um, both of these are, um, very important improvements for those of us that, um, like to be involved in government. Thank you.
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. I think I've been here longer than anybody. So let's, uh, start. I'm still waiting on my public, uh, request for the RPA, the police, I've got that, the threat assessment. I'm still waiting for the threat assessment that was given, um, by the city manager. There, uh, years ago, there was, before the old Marina, the, before the Marina Bridge was torn down, there was a net under that bridge that caught a lot of stuff that came down the river. Now, why wouldn't they let them put the net back up? You have to ask Los Angeles County, but there was a net there. And I walk that trail a lot. There are electric bikes, there are bikers, half of them don't have any insurance, and they're riding like crazy. But, uh, I have seen two big turtles. There, I did call the turtle people, and they came and picked them up, because I wanted to know if somebody heard them, or if they were just big and they died. But they were big, floating down the river, too. At the same time, I'm trying to watch out for the bikers. But I don't know if you know, but I have been going to the coastal commission. I have complaints against the city. We don't need stripes down on the boardwalk. Some of them up, and some of them are not. I'm going back with a picture to show him, that you can't have bikers on that boardwalk and coming at you with electric bikes right in the middle. You ask them for insurance and they tell you, ha, ha, ha. So why don't we have insurance for them? So I'm going to the coastal commission, and I'm going back again about the Inlee parking fees, because I was told, before you can take any more Inlee parking fees, that you have to have a parking plan. What parking plan we have now is not a parking plan to take the Inlee fees that are being given, they're taken by the city. That's a lot of money to bring one bus down here on a Thursday. Why can't the money come out of the sales tax? And how much money do we have in the first quarter? Can anybody tell us how much money has been, been made by the first quarter? But I'm going back on the Inlee parking fees, because you had an article in the local paper and an article in the Leisure World. Ha, 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 we got a bus going down to Seal Beach. Well, the people on, on Main Street that have the little shops that are, are paying that, mostly the food vend- food shops, they don't like that. I don't like it either. Doesn't belong up down, it doesn't belong in a bus. So I will be going back and taking those articles with me and telling them, because I heard from someone on the street that you're supposed to have a parking plan. Where is the parking plan for a parking structure over there? If we can pay $5 million for a fire department up there by the Leisure World, why can't we pay $5 million over here? Float bonds, float bonds for pensions, float bonds for fire departments, float bonds for salaries, float, float bonds. So it is very urgent that you tell the people in Seal Beach how much money is off the sales tax revenue. So, uh, what else now? The pensions are getting worse. There are a lot of little cities that are not being able to pay them, they're going to shut them down. And as far as I know, I haven't heard anything about the pensions that went to the court out in Riverside, as soon as they get that over with. But, um, uh, the other thing, what did I want to talk about? Oh, farmers markets. How many times do you have to have a per-? How many times do you have to have an application for a farmer's market? And every time it comes back, nobody down here wants it.
30 seconds to wrap up.
Nobody down here wants a farmer's market. And it was going to be up there on the cement by the park. I'm taking that picture down to 30 tomorrow, for the next day. And have you read this article that she put in the local paper, the local little magazine that ran out for the fall? I don't remember the budget being handled by her in a professional way.
Your time is up.
My time is up. My time is up.
Anyone else like to speak?
Bruce Bennett, District One. I'd like to reiterate Robert's positive comments about getting the packets out early so you have a chance to read them. However, I still only read it an hour beforehand, so obviously, it wasn't very comprehensive on my part. But I'm glad you guys get to read them earlier and get to speak with the staff and some of your constituents. Also like to thank the city for doing a lot of the maintenance on the streets where the roots lift up those pavers probably about every year, year and a half. And that was one of the things, a former District One council member said when they put the trees in, that they'd be doing this on a regular basis. That's good. And the third item I'd like to compliment on is trimming the trees as we approach the winter storm season so the storm drains don't get blocked. And I think that goes a long ways to helping. That was one of the items on that drainage and whatever the hell the street name was that Robert and I were on many moons ago, maybe three generations of council ago. I did run across and wanted to thank Jeanette for a very good article in the LA Times. And it really brought back and synthesized what transpired. And I had a brainstorm that I'd not thought about because of that article. And one of my five top entities to audit or look at closely was Crimson Petroleum, which in order for one of the council members to vote, we had to, at first, it was a recusal and then somehow a magical reversal along with exempting Crimson. This all has to do with the revenue coming into the city. But we exempted Crimson, which was on my top five list of who should be investigated and looked at, audited, you might say, to see if the funds were correct or submitted correctly. Having said that, the thought occurred to me, we have two other consultants that both came in better on a per-hour basis than the one we hired. And the one we hired can't even touch Crimson. So why not go back to one of the two? Because both had very strong credentials, both in going through the legal process. For example, one of them did Santa Barbara, Ventura, Huntington Beach, Newport. And they were able to look at, and the first thing they suggested they looked at was the legal structure. And so I don't see if we should have an attorney being paid a huge amount if these consultants already have this information and only charge $150 bucks. Now, maybe they wouldn't just take on a little project like Crimson, you know, just to look at it. But I think you, as council members, are leaving what I would call one of the top five candidates for revenue alone. And I don't think that makes any sense. I couldn't believe I hadn't thought of it before, but it's a simple act, probably be very limited because it'd be, you know, only one entity. And also, they could probably bring some legal information, which might make our attorneys more functional in this process. That was my main point. The secondary point I brought up to a number of council members over a period of time and I brought to the Public Works or it really belongs in the planning session. The information that when I started looking at the oil and gas through the Division of Conservation, Oil and Gas, find well, I found a couple of abandoned wells in the city. One on Fourth Street, one on 13th Street. When I looked at the ERA for second PCH, you know, done by Long Beach. They basically indicated clearly that you can't build a home within 300 feet. That was one of the reasons they had to restructure that thing. Having said that, it'd be terrible if we were to ignore that information, not research it, have somebody build a home, have their kids get cancer. The city would be open for enormous suits if we don't investigate it. And I mean, I brought it three or four times. So I really don't, and I realize it's not a big deal, but I just don't think it should be ignored. I think it should be either brought up, discussed, or you guys should direct somebody to look into it. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Berich. I'm a field representative for Congressman Harley Ruda. And I know we have a lot of high school students in the audience tonight, so I briefly wanted to mention a few programs in our office. We're hosting the Congressional App Challenge, if anyone is interested in building an app, and also the art competition as well. And in addition, just wanted to also recognize Intervo House, which continues to care for and support survivors of abuse. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Anyone else? A city attorney report?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session. All five members of the council were present. Council did not consider item C on the posted agenda due to a typographical error in the agenda description. But with regard to items A and B on that agenda, the council took no reportable action.
City manager report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. You have a couple items tonight. There were several events over the last couple of weeks since our last council meeting. I just wanted to take a minute to highlight. I was in attendance at all those events and several of you were there as well. On September 11th, Magaw School held a 9/11 memorial tribute ceremony and really wanted to commend Ronnie Ellis, the principal there. She does a really great job every year of facilitating that assembly for students. And as all of you know, obviously, none of them were alive when that happened, but really giving them an opportunity to kind of understand the significance of that event and why it's important to remember and also pay tribute to all the first responders. Immediately following that ceremony, all of OCFA's fire stations, as well as their headquarters, holds an annual 9/11 remembrance ceremony. So just wanted to thank Captain Robert Wilson and his crew for opening up that ceremony at the fire station every year and inviting council members and staff in the community to have a place to go to remember that day. The following day was the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce Annual Breakfast at Old Ranch Country Club. And want to take an opportunity really to thank outgoing President Karen Coon. She's been great to work with, a great leader, increased membership and lots of things that happened under her leadership and really a great partner in inspiring that continued participation with the city on the Board of Directors. And really welcoming incoming President Cory DeLeon and look forward to working with her and her new team this year. That was followed by the Los Alamos Unified School District, state of the breakfast at the Navy Golf Course in Cypress. And that was Dr. Andrew Pulver's first stint at that event as the new superintendent. So it was really great event. And then followed by Saturday, September 14th. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, our chief, Joe Bailey, was facilitating a drowning prevention task force workshop that day at Marina Center. Really want to commend him again for his leadership in getting out and trying to get legislation passed to help with drowning prevention. I know he's going to be working to try to coordinate another event because it really was, there really were some great speakers there. I know I learned a lot and we're looking forward to bringing that event into Leisure World. We had some residents there that are really looking forward to water safety tips and how they can be working towards being safer in the water, given the circumstances. And so with that, I just want to say thank you, Chief, for your leadership on that and providing the event in a busy couple weeks. So thank you.
Thanks. Move to council comments. Councilmember Masalava.
Okay. Karen Coon, who is the former Chamber of Commerce president, lives in Leisure World. I just wanted you to know that. She's one of us, you guys. I have bad news, really bad news. As you know, I go to vector control, which is mosquitoes. And we have a problem, boys and girls. You need to take care of the standing water and other things that are going to attract mosquitoes. We now have a West Nile virus problem. The trap that was set in my front garden about three weeks ago had the second most mosquitoes in it of the whole county. So none of them tested for West Nile yet. So I think we need to be very careful, wear repellent when you have to, or even when you don't have to, and be aware of the contamination from the mosquitoes. West Nile is not anything to just kind of blow off. It is serious. It's lifelong and you can die from it. So be careful with that. The other committee or board that I'm on, they call them boards, or directors, but, you know, we just go to a meeting, is the sanitation district. They continue to recycle stuff and send it over to the water district. And it's mixed up with real water and put back into the ground. And that's what we're all drinking and what we have been drinking for the last 30 or 40 years in Orange County. So we made it this far. We'll continue to make it that far, mixing up that water. And remember, there was an article or a notice in the Leisure World paper last week that your toilet is not a trash can. So don't put anything in the toilet that doesn't belong there. Don't put your meds in there. Don't put a piece of paper in there. Don't drop something little, oh, it's not going to get stuck. Don't drop that in there either. Be very much aware of your surroundings, mosquitoes and pee, poop and paper. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Verapapa?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on that discussion with item G and see if there's an opportunity to look at that citywide survey and concrete study. Is that something that we could maybe?
Yeah, let me, if I could, just, we'd be happy to take a look at it and then I can report back if it's an item we believe we need to bring to you for consideration. But I'd like an opportunity to talk to staff with it, about it first.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Calment?
Yeah, I hope everybody appreciated the comments from John Hunter. I think it hopefully puts things in a little better perspective as to where we are and where we can go. I'm also happy to report that, you know, we've had some initial discussions with our legislators from Michelle Steele's office, Tyler Deep's office, Tom Umberg and Congressman Ruda. And there's movement there. I mean, we've already been approached by their field representatives that are anxious to start having meetings. And, you know, this is where the political angle happens. Because, you know, at each of those levels, there's interface with other state senators, with other congresspeople that, you know, are involved with the cities upriver. And so if we can generate some of that interest at that level, you know, perhaps we can reduce that 10-year timeline and help to make the other cities aware that there are grants and that they don't just need to acknowledge the fact that poor Seal Beach is stuck with all the trash and thank you for communicating with us, that we can get them to actually do something. So I think that, I think there's an opportunity and a window here and we're going to stay on top of it and hopefully get some action. I also, I attended the beach cleanup this past weekend, which I do every month. But this time, it was also held at the pier as opposed to just down at First Street. And it's amazing how many people come out for that. And it's amazing how much trash is collected. And the turnout is so great that I heard comments from folks that were working down by the pier that they had a hard time finding trash. So that's the good news. But it's something that, you know, the Save Our Beach group should be, you know, praised for because, you know, they're doing it and they're organizing it. And they also have been trying to communicate with the cities upriver with regard to our dilemma. So it's one of these things where it's just going to have to be a synergy from the political end, from legislative end, us doing our part and demonstrating that, you know, by taking a leadership role, when we're the ones that are the recipients of all the trash and debris, that, you know, we're willing to invest our time and energy and money and effort to doing something about it. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Mayor, what time to start at?
I also attended the beach cleanup and wanted to thank all the volunteers who came out and joined, which I also heard it was a very large number. And I just wanted to thank Save Our Beach, who's out there every month, those volunteers doing a great job trying to keep Seal Beach clean. I also attended the flag ceremony at Magaw and at Fire Station 44 on 9/11, the Seal Beach Chamber Installation Breakfast, the school district breakfast put on by Dr. Pulver. I attended a Verizon information meeting on small cell structures in preparation for 5G. Some information on kind of their areas where they have technology. And also, there was a speaker who was talking about how the radio waves, microwaves used are not harmful and trying to kind of reassure. So that was interesting. I also attended a Los Alamos School District Outreach Meeting on some changes to their districting. Instead of having their school board members be at large, they're going to convert to what's called trustee areas. They're doing this kind of proactively to avoid a possible lawsuit or having someone force them to do it. So as they said, they just want to not use instructional dollars for legal problems. So they're going to go ahead and do that. So they're going to have two public hearings. One is tomorrow night during the school district, school board meeting, and another one on, let's see, October 14th, I believe, is a special meeting. This is to gather information from people. And the word has gone out to parents and things, but there are a lot of people in the school district who are not parents and may not have gotten the word. But they're looking, they've hired a demographer who will help with setting up maps. And a lot of interesting discussion, even at this meeting, of where, you know, do you draw a line around the present council, excuse me, school board members? Do you have one school in a district? Or do you maybe draw the lines so that there's two districts next to a school? draw the lines so that there's two districts next to a school? There was also discussion about Leisure World, because the size of a trustee area is estimated to be about 9,600, which is maybe similar to what Leisure World's. But Leisure World has no students and no schools. So, there, there could be, they could be one district, they could cut it in half, they could cut it into five parts. So, anyway, a lot of interesting conversations that were coming up. So, if you go to losal.org, L-O-S-A-L dot org, and click on School Board, you can see more information on this, the timeline, and also click on a link to, if you want to send some information, you know, some opinions to them as they're trying to come up with these maps. So, the maps, I understand, will be ready probably in late October, early November. And then there's going to be two public hearings, one on November 12th and one on December 10th, where they will actually have, consider the maps. And they're going to post them on their website. So, everyone will take a look at them, and the public will be able to give input on what, which, they're gonna, the demographer will make between like three and five. And they, the school board will consider all the input, and then they will make a decision in maybe January or February on which, which areas that they're going to go forward with. Then it has to go to a county committee for approval, and then finally to the state. And for the November 2020 election, they'll be in place. And so, the two school board members that just got elected will serve out their four years, and the other three will be up in some kind of, some kind of thing. They'll also be, the census will be out in 2020, and so they may have to tweak them a little bit. But anyway, very, it was very interesting, all the considerations that go into it. So, if you, if you have an interest, go ahead and take a look.
Thanks.
A little over a week ago, I attended the Seal Beach Chamber Board Installation. It was a great event organized by outgoing Chamber President Karen Coon and her team. I'd like to congratulate the new Board of Directors, including our own community services coordinator, David Net, who will represent the city. And I look forward to continuing our outstanding working relationship with the Chamber. This past weekend, I attended the Coastal Cleanup Day organized by Save Our Beach. It was really a sight to see all the volunteers working together to ensure we have a clean beach and San Gabriel River. Save Our Beach performs this task every third Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I hope you'll decide to join an upcoming cleanup. Thanks.
There's no council items. We'll move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed. Is there a motion?
Didn't we motion, didn't we already adopt the consent?
No.
Okay, I'll second.
Please vote. Is the voting working? Please say aye.
The old-fashioned way?
All right, 5-0. Consent calendar passes. Do we need to cite anything for the ordinance?
No, we did that at the first reading.
Okay. There's no public hearing? Okay, no unfinished business, no new business. So, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting to Monday, October 14th, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you.